We're going to do the, actually, the first thing on the agenda is the public hearing to receive comments on the FY '16 tentative budget. All persons desired to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony on the FY '16 budget. May I have a motion to move into the public hearing?
I move we enter into a public hearing for the fiscal year '16 tentative budget.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Conway. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bianchi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
This public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year 2016 tentative budget. Anyone who wishes to be heard will have the opportunity to present written or oral testimony. Can we get a little presentation briefly on the budget?
Certainly. The budget process at Warren is quite extensive. We start with staffing and class election in November, do numerous presentations to the board based on the input that we get from staff, administration, on their needs and prioritize their needs. The process, we've had about six finance committee meetings where you presented that information, gotten recommendations from the board. We put together a budget which reflects the revenue we expect to receive and the expenditures based on the information provided. So this process involves many parties of the district, from the board down to the teacher level, and we believe that it's very comprehensive in nature. We've made, we've done all the notices that we require, and now we'll ask you to adapt the budget tonight.
Thank you, Carolyn. Were there any additional comments from the Board of Education regarding the fiscal year '16 tentative budget?
I have none.
I would like to make a comment, because I know there have been a lot of people who were putting a lot of support into this budget. My problem with the budget, for those of you who weren't here last year, is the same issue from last year. It has to do with the largest contract that's part of this budget, which is the union contract that the board approved on May 13, 2014, and in that approval, it replaced and extended the union contract. My issue was not with that, my issue was how that happened. The board had, in March, sometime in March, prior spring break, the board had given the board president, John Anderson, authority to talk to the board about the contract, and that was the only authority that was given to the board president. What came back was a fully negotiated contract that replaced the contract that was set to expire on June 30 of 2014. It was a replacement and extension of that contract. But my issue last year, and it remains this year because the contract continues through this budget, is that the board did not give authority to do a full negotiation until that, and the board was not involved in the process and did not give any direction to that approach. Now, the board did approve that on May 13, 2014. I raised an issue at that time, I raised this issue at the budgeting time period, and because it's the largest contract in this budget, it still is an issue for me. Whether the allegations are true or not, that it was legal or illegal is not the point, it's that I had an issue with it at the time, I had an issue with the last budget, and because it continues into this budget, it still is an issue for me. I just wanted to clarify that for the people who weren't here last year and for the public that's watching at home.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any other comments by the Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay, then will the Board Secretary or Board Clerk read into the record any written testimony concerning the proposed fiscal year 2016 tentative budget? We've now received any written testimony. Are there, is there any person or persons who would like to provide oral testimony or public comments concerning the proposed fiscal '16 tentative budget? There are no people who wish to speak. All persons desired to be heard have been given the opportunity to present written or oral testimony with respect to the fiscal year '16 tentative budget. The fiscal year tentative budget has been placed on tonight's agenda as an action item. May I have a motion to close the public hearing for the fiscal year '16 tentative budget and return to open session?
I move to close the public hearing for the fiscal year '16 tentative budget and return to open session.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Drake. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Bianchi?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda then is the approval of the agenda. So we do have some changes on the agenda. One is we will be on item, let's see, E, under new business, which is approval of hiring recommendations. We have additional items, 95 through 100, so those names and actions will be read into the motion, as part of the motion. We've also made, we made changes to the motion for item C under old business. The approval of dismissal of Margaret Marar, Director of Special Duty, will be as amended. We also have to add a new business item, which is the notification of the posting of academic, administrative, and teacher salaries and benefits for fiscal year 2016. So we have, I think we have posted it, or we're going to post it, or it is posted?
It's posted in the Treasurers' Report now?
It's posted in the Treasurers'
And they'll get posted on the website.
And it'll be on the website, so we have to give an official notification of that, so we will put that under new business, item G.
Are we allowed to add that, John?
Well, we can't. Yeah, I don't think we can add, if it's a part of...
Okay, then I'll tell you what we'll do. I'll just talk about it in the President's Report.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
We'll take care of it then. Anyway, we don't have to add motion, another item. It's not an action item anyway, yeah, it's just a conversation.
We can just post.
Right. Okay. I have no other changes to the agenda, does anybody else have any?
John, I would like check number 328190.
Three, two, wait a minute, three, two, eight, one, nine, oh, four.
Thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fourteen cents to Hodges, Louisey, Eisenhammer, Roddick, and Co., voted on separately.
Okay, so someone, I'm sure we'll do the math on this. So we have to change the payment of the bills, item D, and we'll have to vote separately on this one bill, which will change the motion for the rest of them by thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fourteen cents. We'll get a number on that. Okay?
It's five hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Five oh five, four fifty, sixty-eight. Got it. That's okay. Yeah, that's not enough. So we'll...
You're right.
We'll move to, we'll have a motion then to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Drake. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bianchi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Very good, we will move right along. Our next item is recognitions, and we have some fine young people here to recognize. They're Warren Police Explorers.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. One of the conversations that I was having actually with our administrators here last week when we were standing out in front of the school here at the school town, was we were talking about the vital role that liaison officers and police in general play in terms of keeping our community safe. And the reason for that is, I think if you asked anybody in their community, where's the most valuable, where's our most precious assets in our community, right? The first thing they would say is, in all of our schools on a daily basis, because people know that our future is at Warren Township High School as well as our center schools. And as a result of that, I think we are also very sensitive to and aware of the fact that our police each and every day put their lives on the line for all of us, and it's comforting for us to know in the schools how much they look out for us in our hopes to keep schools safe and secure. It's been a privilege for me the last couple of months as I've transitioned in to get to know the great work of the Gurnee Police Department, and we're here to recognize our explorers this morning. But first, I'd like to recognize a good new friend of mine and a great police chief here in Gurnee, Chief Kevin Woodson.
Thank you very much, Dr. Olbrum, and ladies and gentlemen of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and introduce a group of young men and women who we are extremely proud of. I probably became aware of their existence as there was some press locally regarding their competition last month in Romeoville. The Post has been in existence for less than a year. It started with applications from almost 100 young men and women who were interested in applying. We simulated a process that was approximately that of entering into police service with some physical agility work, interviews, a series of tests, things that they will be familiar with as they move forward in their pursuits of law enforcement careers. So 20 were chosen, and the group here today, everyone has a connection here to Warren, they're current students or online. The Post is something that I personally wanted to create for quite some time, but it's not the kind of program that a boss can just say, "Let's make this happen." You need somebody who's got a passion for it, somebody who's really interested in making that happen. And we had two officers that we recently hired, and they came over from other departments as experienced police officers, but they had begun their pursuit of a law enforcement career through explorer experience. They were both explorers, and they came to me with the vision and the desire to create this, and they have done it with such passion. I'll let Officer Lindahl explain exactly what their accomplishments were in Romeoville because they are significant. But I will introduce the members of the police department staff that are here. Of course, Yuris Arroyo, Jimoz Arroyo's in the back, everybody knows him, Sergeant John Ward, Sergeant Jeremy Gahn, who oversees and supervises the Post, so everybody here is very familiar with him, and Officer Chris Lindahl, who was one of the Post advisors who was, as I said, instrumental in creating the Post. So I'd like to invite Officer Lindahl to come up here, maybe say a few words, and then introduce the Post.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I just kind of want to explain what exploring is. A lot of people only hear of explorers and they really have no idea what the actual program is because they never have access to it or their community didn't have an explorer program. It's actually chartered through the Boy Scouts of America. Even though we are a new Post, exploring has been around since the 1970s, specifically 1973, as far as law enforcement goes. And law enforcement isn't the only exploring option, and what they mean by exploring is you're exploring a career field. Okay, we're exploring, in this particular case, the law enforcement career. But there's also engineering fields, there's fire exploring, EMS exploring, dispatching exploring, so there's a lot of different exploring posts, not necessarily law enforcement, but the department sponsors whichever Post it. So obviously, we are solely a law enforcement, exploring Post, so that gives them a chance to explore the career before they actually enter, okay? Which is good because they might do a year, two years, and figure out that, hey, this is not what I'm cut out for, or I just don't have an interest, and then they could examine other options before they go to college. So it's a good experience, plus it's fun. They get to do a lot of great things with the police department ride-alongs, help us out at early days, which they were out. Community service, and it's all volunteer, so that really shows what they're made out of when you're not paying. Okay, they volunteer their times on their weekends, they come to weekly training for three to four hours a week, rigorous police training, and then they get their uniforms after they complete a probationary period, and we put them to work. Anything that the police department needs as far as community service, you know, we'll tap into their resources. Like the chief said, it was very, very competitive as far as who got into this program. Over 100 people applied, 20 were accepted, 11 are Warren students, so that's just a testament of the men and women that are coming through this school system, getting into this program. Going back, the ages for this are 14 to 20, okay? So, you know, a 14-year-old wearing this uniform, taking that responsibility, means a lot when they don't even have a driver's license, okay? But we expect them to go out and help direct traffic. So, is it contradictory? Possibly, but we give them a good training, you know, and that way they succeed. We recently competed at the state competition for the first time, and we did an outstanding job. We took home 14 state awards, and those competitions that they competed in varied in all aspects of police work. It could have been traffic stops, domestic disputes, crime scene response, crime scene processing, field sobriety, courtroom testimony, written exams, physical agility, just to name a few. There's any sort of topic that you could think a police officer does, they were tested on, and they brought home 14 awards, so that's amazing. We definitely took, especially being a brand-new Post, we took the most awards for any Post in the state.
Congratulations.
So we'll just take a few minutes to go around and introduce the Warren Explorers. So what I'll have them do is, I'll just have them stand up.
And we have some certificates to go.
Oh, okay. Would you like to go in order, or?
You know, if you want to read in this order, that'd be great.
We're all non-officials.
So it'll just be kind of out of order, so just kind of watch the boots, don't step on any toes. We'll start off with, also, we also have a command structure. It's very similar to the police department where the youth leadership take those leadership roles, okay? We introduce them to the law enforcement profession, but we want to develop them to be the leaders of our community and future police officers and leaders in our police department. So there is a command structure. They have to go through a test, which is even more rigorous than to get into the Post. They have to show their expertise, their knowledge, they go through an oral interview board, a written test, and then there's a rank structure, and then they take on those leadership abilities, those responsibilities, and then we fine-tune them and mentor them as they go. The first one, who is, I guess, the top explorer, is the Explorer Chief, Explorer Chief Austin Dembski.
Thank you.
So he's a class of 2015. Explorer Commander Brandon Ryzik. Explorer Sergeant Madison Tomaskowicz. Explorer Melinda Andrews. Class of 2016. Explorer James Olerke. Class of 2017. Explorer Eric Kaprizis. Explorer Taylor Duan. Explorer Alex Partey. Class of 2017.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
In a second, we're going to move on to the rest of our meeting, which everyone is more than welcome to take.
Really?
They've been to more meetings before, laid on the strand.
If you are planning on leaving, it'd be great if we can get a picture of all of you together out in the hallway. Would you do that?
Thank you, Brandon, and also Officer Lindell, and all the other helpers, and the explorers. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I thought they were.
Set up straight.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. This is a part of the meeting. If anyone would like to speak, may I address the board? We did not have anyone sign in this evening to speak, but if there's anyone here who would like to have the opportunity to address the board now would be the time. Next item was the President's Report. We have, we have the notification of posting of administrative and teacher salaries and benefits for fiscal year 2016. This is now in the Treasurers' Report, and we posted to our website by...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, which will be September 23rd. Okay. The other thing I was just wondering, is about...
So these original iPads that we've had, I don't know how long, how long have we had these? Probably four years? Approximately two and a half years.
Two and a half years, okay. My battery is just starting to drop off dramatically rapidly. I just didn't, what would be our theoretical timeframe to trade the original? I know Catherine's readers are relatively happy about this.
Three years, four years?
I'm just curious, it doesn't matter, I don't, I'm not trying to get rid of that.
If you're having issues with it, I don't want that to happen.
No, it's not terrible, I just noticed it's shorter than it was, so I just, if it gets to the point where it doesn't hold a charge, believe me, I'll hear. I'm not there yet, I was just trying to get a feeling for another year, four, it could be four years, I would think, actually it was not updated. Okay.
Board members, I wouldn't have to, if you're having any problems at all with your devices, let us know, try to make sure we get you...
Or replace them or something.
Things that are on their way out.
Yeah, we have some too.
Could I ask one last quick question?
Sure.
About the Chromebooks, how, what percentage of the Chromebooks are not working?
I actually know that number, under 1%.
And?
And not working, that includes cracked screens and physical damage. If you just said not working, it would be well under, well under percent, not even double digits. A lot of them are more damaged and cracked than anything else.
Damaged by the student problem?
Right, or it was, you know, one or two might have been damaged in shipping, but...
Okay, and have they all been repaired?
No, not yet.
When are they going to be repaired?
Well, number one, we couldn't repair them until the insurance went into effect, and that was the September 1 deadline we gave the parents. So all those devices that can go out on insurance will go out, and then the other ones are waiting for students to start their Tech Academy Plus and get their certifications so they can repair them internally here in the...
So how long do you guys estimate that?
I couldn't even put an S on it, but the students who have those damaged devices have replacement devices.
I know. I realize that. Are the replacement device, or they were something that teachers had?
No, no, they were devices that were in students' hands last year.
The students had last year, okay.
Same, they're just, they're just last year's model, same setup, same RAM, same, you know, same user experience. Kids have access to all their files.
Right. I'm just curious, because I've heard from two parents that their students had replacement, temporary replacements, and so I was curious about how many were damaged or whatever.
Right. Okay. Next item is the committee reports. We have a finance committee...
We had a finance committee meeting on August 18. At that time, I presented the tentative fiscal year 2016 budget. The, we have made some changes to that budget that you will... We discussed the possibility of paying that down and using money from tax and from the financing to pay that down, along with, including $250,000 for Chromebook replacements for next year's freshmen, $750,000 in capital expenditure for projects that Mr. Parrott and Mr. Mahler were taught we'll talk about tonight, and also an additional $150,000 a year for the IMRF liability. So, that was the highlights of the finance meeting.
Okay.
Carol, we also, at our next finance committee meeting, we'd also like to talk a little bit about those projects, maybe do some prioritization with the administrators at both buildings to make sure that we're, get things out, you know, early in the year this year for summer, next year, because there's some other good projects. So, we'll get that information out to the board once we think about which board meeting that might be up.
Right.
We also have a committee meeting for our policies, and on September the 18th, and it was a great meeting, thanks to Barbara and Tom for attending. If you remember, our policies, most of them are generated by recommendations that come out of the School Board Association and their press, and the press recommendations, usually our edits are based on legal opinion by the School Board Association for all the districts, based on legislation updates or sometimes language changes, just to clarify, and or sometimes they're four or five-year reviews, they like policies not to go longer than five years, or much longer than that, without just giving a general overview. As we talked about in the policy committee, it's very important that we stay up on these policies, because it's hard to catch up to things, to save that later on in the vote, having to read these outreach through the policies that we looked at at that committee meeting. We looked at three that were relatively old, those were 1:20 on district organization, 4:120 on food services, 4:150 on facility management. Then we moved into the May 2015 press recommendations, 2:250 with access to district records, 3:40 was on the superintendent, 3:50 on administrative personnel, 3:60 on administrative responsibility of the principal, 4:45 on insufficient fund checks, 5:40 on chronic infectious disease, 5:120 on ethics, 5:180 on temporary illness and temporary capacity, 5:270 on employment at will, 5:290 on employment termination, 5:330 on sick days, 6:16 on school accountability, 6:40 on curriculum development. Then we moved into the August press edition, which had 2:160 on board attorney, 2:260 on uniform greenwich procedure, 4:50 on payment procedures, 5:50 on drug and alcohol-free workplace, 5:170 on copyright, 5:270 on employment at will, 5:290 on employment termination, 6:140 on the education of homeless students, 6:10 on equal educational opportunities, I'm sorry, there's 7:10, 7:40 on non-public school students, 7:90 on released during school hours, 7:220 on bus conduct, 7:260 on exemption from physical activity, 7:30 restrictions on publications, 7:325 on student fundraising, 8:10 on connection with the community, and 8:80 on district. Some of the items that we review are obviously more, the recommendations are probably more observable from an administrative level, but there were several policies that we looked at that were pretty specific that we kind of have the board members staying on from a community perspective, and so it was really nice to have board members to kind of weigh in with us to really focus in on some of those. We also have a whole other set of administrative procedures that we'll review administratively, they go in line with the board policies, but obviously, at the boards, the highest of the board's radar should be on the policies that are approved by the board for the school district. So, those are the policies that were reviewed, and those we'll also have a first reading in the...
John, could we have, could we, or maybe just have a copy of the press?
Yeah, the, the press itself too, there was a question that can, all of this, all of the documents are in the public section of board docs. So, the policies themselves are all there.
Where did I find it?
Under the, under the...
The library.
They're being...
Their policies.
They're in tonight's agenda.
Right, the public section. So, and we are using, the language that's there is generally committee worksheets, the committee, if you look under those policies, what will be, there will be the committee worksheets from press.
Gina, you show me afterwards. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Well, I, I see the list, but not the press packet. This is our document, isn't it? It's our document.
We'll find it for you, it's in there. It'll, make sure we find that when the meeting's over. So, I have a question going back to the finance committee meeting, so we also talked about borrowing money to pay that debt.
Yes, we did.
Is that legal?
Yes, we can.
So, if we can borrow money at a half a percent or 2% to free or whatever, instead of seven and a half or whatever, so we have that debt limit thing that we can borrow, right?
Yes, we can.
And how much money do we have in that?
That would be approximately $7 million that we could borrow.
Right.
The unfunded liability is approximately 3.8 million.
So, that would save us 6% on 3 million, or whatever, I don't, 3%, whatever it is.
Right, there are, there are other financing vehicles, at least up to that song.
I think we should definitely proceed down that path, if it saves us, you know, 4%. We got the liability anyway, we, no reason to give it to the state. Boom.
We have been researching it, so I'll bring the information forward to the superintendent and very forward to that.
Perfect, thank you.
And outside of that, the other piece that, at the finance committee meeting, that tip money that came in, that was none, you know, that was, not that we didn't anticipate, right, but it wasn't necessarily one of our regular revenue sources, so those are easy ones to be accounted for.
How much tip money did we end up getting?
Slightly over 799,000. Where did you see that check? Are we to come?
We're just actually getting our own money there.
That's right.
So, then we only have to borrow about 3 million.
That's correct.
So, okay, superintendent's report is that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I just wanted to bring the board to attention, we have a number of items that are coming up, just a heads up for some press releases that have gone out recently. We do have homecoming coming up next week, next week, and so we will have a Zora contest inside the schools on Monday, you guys can help gather there as well back there. A powder puff is on Wednesday evening, we have a football game on Friday evening, we have a parade this year at 9 o'clock in the morning, on Saturday morning following the football night, Saturday night is the dance, and I'm trying to remember, if any of you have any interest in the parade, or would like to participate, just let me know, and we'll figure out whether or not there are other board members that are interested, I'm sure we can find a way to have you participating in the parade if you'd like. Saturday mornings definitely bring a favorite from the parade following the game, but student council is very excited, right, and seems to be putting a lot of energy into that. Also, on October 8th through 10th, the shining lights are hanging here in our back, either I have a handout for each board member before you leave tonight, that'll remind you of that, as well as the homecoming activities. We did have a couple of FOAs come in within the last month, we had one additional FOA come in from Margaret Marat, we also had a FOA come in from the Better Government Association. Included in the board materials were the monthly staffing report, there weren't any changes from last month, currently they're on that staffing report, but we did, we do have an item in the personnel agenda regarding one aid position, which might remedy that for next month. We do have a report that's gifts to the district, not going to talk about it at all, but we thought, the board is technically required to accept any gifts over $500, if you will, and we just wanted to make sure that as the gifts come in, so we don't miss them, there's a lot of people that donate things to the schools, we ask the administrators as much as possible, if they, if they hear them coming in, if they can just report them to us, and we'll keep them on the spreadsheet and share that with the board every, every month, just in case you have any of those businesses or individuals in town who are generous enough to do some donations. We will have other reports in October, as it relates to attendance and discipline of the school. As a reminder, we do have the, October 13th is our first strategic planning session here. As a result of that, we're just about to cancel our regular board meeting for that week, so we're just about to do that tomorrow probably, it's canceled the one meeting and established the other, and make sure you continue to work on your book read prior to strategic plan, and I'll hand it over to Carol for the Treasurers' Report.
Included in your board packet is the January Treasurers' Report. The, being the first month of the fiscal year, there really isn't a lot to report. The comparisons, depending on when we reverse accruals, aren't always matching in months, so really this one is going to be much more informational in the next few months as we go on. In the Treasurers' Report is the report on the administrative and teachers compensation about that, so you'll want to take a look at that when you have a chance. That is, and as I did report, we did receive 799,000, some change from the dissolving of tip number five, which is a Lakers tip. So, that was more money than we expected, and that was good news to us. We also received some ALOT money, close to $400,000, thanks to the efforts, so Willie Garrick and many others in applying for those funds and doing a lot of paperwork to, for monitoring and compliance with that program, and that program will continue. So, that was a first year for us, for ALOT money, and very good news for the district, and that is included in the budget for fiscal year 16. So, thanks to William and all of those people involved. Oh, dates, thank you very much, Dr. Almond. We did have a question on some due dates on some filings that we would be making, the, a question came about the annual statement of affairs, and the note was about it being filed in September with the ROE. Actually, we don't have any filings with the ROE in September. Our next due date will be the audit and the annual financial report, the AFR, which will be filed with the ROE on October 15th, and then that will go to the State Board of Education. The annual statement of affairs is filed, actually it's published in the paper on summer 1st, so that will be a document that's very extensive, it's published in the paper, we'll be happy to give you a copy of that before that due date. That due date is not September, it's December 1st for circulation, and submitted to the Board of Education on December 15th. So, those will be our big due dates coming up, and if anybody has any questions on any specific filings, we have the answer book.
The October 15th audit, because of our board meetings, do we have an extension of that?
We will file an extension with the ROE, just to give you, the board, the courtesy of hearing the audit, which will be presented on the 27th.
And that's not unusual at all, based on what people's board meetings are in October, so, thanks. We have two other pieces of information that we didn't want to share, we have to check them out.
Are we finished with the transition?
Yes.
Oh, Carol, before I forget, I have a check for $100 for my grandson's fees, because I'm not able to pay them all at one point, and I think this is important for parents to realize, that people can't pay 425 or 50 dollars all at once, and so I have a check, if you would make sure Rena gets it, to apply it to her account, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, last spring, we took a tour of any of us of the Oak Plain campus and looked at some of the areas of the buildings, the older areas of the building, some of the things we had done, but also a lot of the things we needed to do at the Oak Plain campus, so we have raised, well, so taking the tour again, we thought we'd bring you a slideshow, and then we'd show you where we're at with some of the changes and other things that we were also looking at at the same time. First of all, we have a few completed projects from the summer, the lecture hall seating and carpeting, you see lecture hall in the upper right-hand corner, was completely redone this summer, so there's new seats, new tables. If you remember the old lecture hall where we used to have board meetings, it was the single chair that you pulled up and put them over, which were original to 1985, back in the beginning, and the amount of break that John knows, we really couldn't repair them anymore, so we have a fantastic lecture hall now for kids and for meetings, if we'd like to hold them there as well. Also, in the field house, we've always talked about doing some changes in the field house, and you'll see some more slides on it. We did do some painting in the field house this summer, we painted that, all the walls all the way around, we did not do the ceiling, we didn't need to, we saved some money there, but we wanted to add something that identified the field house as really being from Warren High School, and as we joked, it was a field house, when you stood in, you didn't know what state you were in, what country you were in, it was just a big space. So, now at least it has some identity for Warren High School. A few other completed projects, on the left, that's a picture of the concession stand outside. If you remember, we didn't get out there, but due to the freezing and thawing the last couple of winters, the floors were considerably cracking, problems, and the interior walls were all damaged, they also had a number of cracks through them, so it wasn't really stable inside. That was all torn up, all the plumbing was torn up, everything was replaced, all the interior walls, the interior floors, and all the plumbing was redone. So, we have two nice new restroom facilities at the stadium. Also, on the right, we have first floor carpeting, which was done last year, but I wanted to include it, because it was a pretty big project throughout the first floor, you could see some of it there, and also these ramps leading down to the field house, there's an epoxy on them now, probably two years ago, there was carpeting on them, all right, that was pulled out, it was bare concrete, and it stayed bare concrete for a good year and a half or so, until we were able to put down the epoxy, so it's a major improvement for us there in the flooring. These are some areas we looked at, on the left, you see the two different stairwells, those are the two stairwells that used to lead outside, upstairs, and into the courtyard before we did the addition. So, those are 1985 stairwells that led outside, the only people that ever went out there and used them were really the PE classes to get outside to the courtyard. When we filled in the courtyard, now we're using these stairwells every day, every day kids are going up these stairwells to the gym or to the weight room. So, this is in process, and we also added in, we had 20 classrooms where the carpeting here is at least probably 10 years old, I'd say, this is a health room on the first floor, but we have 20 that we identified that were in rough shape. So, that bit has gone out, it was proved, all the material's been ordered, so this is going to be done here within the next couple of months. We just need to schedule the classrooms, we may have to wait for winter break, but we can get it done soon. So, that's another change that's coming here this semester. This is the boys' and girls' pool locker room flooring, the one on the left here, that's the boys' pool locker room, and the one on the right is the new girls' pool locker room. You can see, we never finished the flooring here, at the time we were doing the construction, we were looking at saving some money when we needed to pinch some pennies, so we didn't really do any flooring in the girls', the new locker room, but we need to get that done, it has been approved, and it should be done within the next month. The same type of epoxy that was on that hallway is going to go down in these two areas. So, we'll have the boys' pool locker room and the girls' pool locker room, we'll have them formed.
Does that epoxy have any of the sand, and it's so anti-skid?
Yeah, it is, the epoxy is really the chips that they put on, a little bit, you know, it's like an emulsion.
Yeah, good.
The field house, these are all in process, you can see the doors we have here, we actually, you can see the rusting that we have here, some of us got down to take a look at that, there's four sets of doors in the field house, if, if you take this at the right time... So we'll have the boys' pool locker room and the girls' pool locker room, we'll have them for.
Does that epoxy have any of the sand, and it's so anti-skid?
Yeah, it is, the epoxy is really the chips that they put on, a little bit, you know, it's like an emulsion.
Yeah.
The fieldhouse, these are all in process. You can see the doors we have here. We actually, you can see the rusting that we have here, some of us got down to take a look at that. There's four sets of doors in the fieldhouse. If you take this at the right time when I start, you can see all the light underneath the doors, right? They're all wide open, basically, anything could come in. Two of them have been replaced already, okay? Within the last month, and we're scheduled to do the other two sets here within the next month here. We just need to set up the time for them to come in, so that's already happening. And if you look at the fieldhouse mats on the left, that's an area where we also looked at, since we're making improvements. There's a number of them that were torn. We patched in, as you see, the colors are different, we patched in other mats as we could over the years. But now that we have the painting done and the doors done, the mats really need to be replaced. Again, that's another one that's been approved, the order just went in this week, right, Carol?
Right.
So we'll get that done here within this semester hopefully. Outside, these are a couple of projects that are actually our future and one's happening right now. One is on the left, you see, that's the tennis court hill, the infamous hill, if you've ever been back there, it's been like that for a long time. You can see where it's washing out. Every time it rains, this, you know, this material here washes out under here and creates an hazard at the bottom. And usually Charlie's out there and he shovels everything and throws it back up the hill as best he can. If you look closely, you can also see at the top of the stairs, they're starting to pitch here, not a great pitch, but they're actually starting to pitch from the erosion coming across them. So this is a future project, probably not something that will happen this fall, but something we need to address. And we've talked about landscaping there, adding another path. Most kids just walk across this, right? They just take here, they won't come down the steps, they straight across, so we've talked about adding a path there as well. So that's another project.
We're talking about maybe moving some of the gutters coming off the roofs.
Yeah.
There was two gutters that come off the roof on those corners that probably produce a lot of that erosion. And it's pretty bad there.
They either go straight out to the tennis courts or they're great, they come straight this way. Yeah, and we can look at that as well. This is a picture of the back of the cafeteria at Oakland. These are the emergency exit doors off of the addition that we put on five years ago to the Oakland campus. When you come down these steps, this is what you step off into. Not so bad right now when it's dry, but if you consider if we had an evacuation with the cafeteria full with 500 kids, and they all come off those steps, one after another, and it had just rained, or worse yet, it's winter, and what we do in the winter is we run the plow up to that spot and clear it out, and we try to keep it as clear as we can, but you're plowing grass, basically, which is a problem. We've already started the project, Carol, approved moving this material out and creating a stone path. What would you call it? Not stones, it's...
This will be a crushed limestone. And on part of the pathways, we will have a product that they use in Atlas Hall, which is a little more porous, it's scanned in color. We researched many different products, because it is a floodway, and had to come up with a porous product that...
It's like a turf.
No, no, it's a...
No, sometimes you'll see them on baseball fields, it's almost sandy gritty.
Yes, that's what you're looking at.
And the stone has already, it was just delivered today, they've already excavated for the paths there, so we can have a more safe exit for kids, in fact, to come on all steps, if we ever do that to evacuate.
And actually, the path by the fieldhouse, that erosion area, we, the company that we're working with, we may be able to get that done through this fall, so that's our anticipation, is that we'll correct that erosion problem, and put a path down that follows, you know, more the traffic flow to students.
Another future project in the pool area, those two large white tanks are the pool filters. They're past their useful life, I'm not sure how many years Carol might know, but both, this is a very expensive project. If we lose the filters, obviously, we lose the pool. And that means it impacts classes during the day, impacts your PE curriculum, and obviously, that pool is being used before school, starting at 5:00 a.m., and probably still going on right now at night, with, between swim club and the swim teams, they're using it quite often. So that's, that's an area that we really need to address soon. Now Carol, we want to, we did have someone in to take a look at this and give us a...
We did have a pool consultant come in and look at it. We can bring that information to the board. The approximate cost to replace just the filtration in it was about $262,000. That would have to go out to bid, which we would expect would be January for approval in February or March. And that would be, the consultant tells us we're good for this year, but of course, anything can happen, but it's not a project that you go in very lightly.
And I think I'm doing the end of my part, I have to hand over to Rob for his. The fieldhouse flooring, you can see a shot here of the flooring, the shine of the lights, it's pretty slick. I believe it's from the 1980s era. We use it regularly, you can see that, the area here is actually a high jump pit, excuse me, a long jump pit, thank you. It's not used any longer, but it is certainly past its useful life. We did do the project in the gym, that's been outstanding, you know, for our students and for our athletics. So this is something else we'd like to consider in the future, that it's, it's gone time to look at this area as well. Oh, one more. Boys' locker room. I don't remember if we walked through the boys' locker room.
We did.
This is another area, right, took a shot, that wouldn't be too offensive here, trying to keep it, you know, PG here. But it is an area that hasn't been touched for many, many years, and this goes back pre-fire, well into the probably 70s or earlier. But it is an area that could use some attention. I'll leave it at that.
Might just comment on this real quickly. The issue with the locker room, which is why we're not working on it presently, is that we're going to have to excavate the plumbing up in the floor, so we're going to have to cut concrete out. So that's something that's going to be, would have to be a summer project, so we'd have the time. And then that would also be an epoxy coated floor. If you remember, they have the very old facilities in there, bathroom facilities, and that plumbing is in horrible shape. So it's a big project, and that's why we've slated that for the summer work.
Good evening. Some of the summer work that was done at Allmand this past summer, one of the first projects that we took some steps on was the storage barn or pole barn that's out back on the north side of our campus, a picture of that sign on the left that we have seen it, but I'm assuming most of you would recognize the facility. The major work that got done this past summer was actually the pouring of the concrete floor in that facility. I know the picture's a little dark, on the right-hand side, but that's the concrete floor that's poured in there now. There's still some detailing that we're doing now with getting a garage door opener, you know, on the actual garage door that's there, and door locks on, there's some electrical work to get some lighting and stuff in there. So the project's pretty much done, but there's still a few details that we have to advance on that. But that was one of the major works that got done this past summer. If you recall, that that project was started in conjunction with the Lake County Tech Campus and the Buildings Trades Program, giving students some opportunities, so some of that initial structure that is there was actually created by students. So we had to do some contracting of work for roofing and stuff like that, to get a big crane in here, to get some of that worked on, but it was a great project for some students to get some hands-on experience that they might not otherwise have gotten. So we're working on getting the details of that one done. The next two projects that really took over a lot of our time this summer are really working conjunction with each other. The project of moving our technology staff downstairs to rooms 108 and 109, or what we know as rooms 108 and 109, to move into the technology offices, their actual office space. And then the other room, room 109, is the actual service space where the Chromebooks and stuff like that will get serviced. So the picture on the far right is the service space, and then this top picture is a part of the offices that are down there. The bottom picture, adjacent to the workspace, is a new computer lab that was developed. That's where the students will get the hand-on experience and get certified to be able to work on the Chromebooks. That service space where our office staff are, our technology staff are housed, is right adjacent to that computer lab, so there's a door that actually feeds into that office space, so it's a close connection for those two to work together. And then in doing that, it created some space in our library, so we've kind of redesigned our library, you might have seen some movement in there over the summer as we had meetings in there. We've kind of reorganized the picture on the far left, we have a bank of computers now. If you remember, there was, I don't know, 30 or 40 computers in there at stations with the Chromebooks coming onboard. There wasn't a need to have as many desktop computers in there, so we still do have a bank in there for students to do printing and, I guess, old-fashioned desktop work. It's where they're landlocked at a station, but we still have some computers in there where the students are mobile. When we took up the space downstairs with the, with the offices, that we needed a place for our textbooks to go. So having less textbooks now and going to classroom sets and all this movement that we're having and the discussions that you're having with the technology offices, used to be in the library, it freed up their space, so what was their old offices are, is now the textbook room, so we did kind of swap there. So that's why those were kind of in conjunction together. And we did some reorganizing of our library bookshelves, which you probably saw some movement there from, in the, you can see the windows at the front of the library are all open there, and you don't have to look in and see some bookshelves. We kind of reshuffled those around to kind of open up that library space to invite more students in and actually make it a resource center for students to come to during lunch period, study halls and things like that. So it's a much more open space, so we're doing some redesign of furniture and stuff like that. Those are the only pictures I have, I don't have as many. And actually, just to go off of what Dr. Alvin said, we are prioritizing right now, we're working in both buildings, are working right now to prioritize what our needs are, and moving forward, we're going to bring some things forward for a future project that will need both campuses. So that's kind of where we left at. Is there anything else to add, Carol?
Sure, just two other things. One of the projects that we identified for fiscal year 16 was resurfacing and restriping the parking lots. It did go out to bid, we got it out late, and we didn't get a good response, so that's going to go back out to bid in January. So that would be work that we would slate for June, and would work with the assistant prin, associate principals to get that taken care of. We've also ordered furniture for the library to fill up some of that space and make it a more collaborative environment there. And that is either in the district now or coming...
It is in the district, it's being put together, and we're just working on getting it all put together so we can kind of move it all at once instead of piecemeal. So the guys are working on putting lots of bolts and screws and wheels and chairs and stuff like that.
It's got some nice tables and chairs, and I think that's going to make it a much more collaborative environment, and the principals and Rob and Chuck had great ideas on how to do this. So I, except for a few big projects yet, everything is in process. So we're happy, we started off slow, but we're, we're in the middle of the thing.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
We're on technology, and it doesn't have to do with remodeling. Students who do not have access to Wi-Fi, sometime over the summer, Woodland set up a Wi-Fi system on their parking lot, I think it's at the, what do they call that? The middle school, is that it?
Yeah, thank you.
And I was wondering what we do for students who do not have access at home to Wi-Fi, or if we could make an agreement with Woodland, for example, that our students could go to their parking lot and use their Wi-Fi, because it's set up in such a way at Woodland that you have to have an access code or something, if I remember right. I'm kind of vague, since I didn't reread it before we came to the meeting, because I didn't know this was going to come up at night.
I know Woodland has identified various locations in Gurnee in their posting signs that would be Wi-Fi accessible for students. So I'm sure the Rico and Stephanie could get together with Woodland and find out how we can share in some, some Wi-Fi use.
I actually emailed the Chamber of Commerce to see if they wanted to work on a group, collaborative project to identify spots in Gurnee or businesses in Gurnee that had Wi-Fi free and available to the students. I haven't heard back from them yet, but I'll follow up.
Questions like that are great for our strategic planning, too, that's why we, you know, number one, that space is going to be done for our strategic planning here in a few weeks, so that's kind of a deadline on those tables. But the other piece...
Is that right? Done?
The question about accessibility, obviously, is one that goes hand-in-hand with our new one-to-one initiative and making sure that our kids have the access they need, and it's something that's not in our current strategic plan, because when we did it four years ago, we weren't here now. So it's obviously an area that's going to need a lot of attention in our new plan that we're excited to kick off in a few weeks, and I'll circle back to that. I want to say thanks to Carol, that budget amount in the finance committee, that three-quarters of a million a year, sounds like a lot of money, but when you talk about the projects that we have to keep up with and try to keep making a dent in at both campuses, that goes quick. And so that will be important, be when we get together to talk about, you know, what's most important for next year, and then try to identify the year after, so that we can have a consistent fund to put towards our buildings. Thanks to you two, as well as to Tom and Jose, who do a great job in the buildings, you know, piecing things together at times, and their expertise gets things done a lot cheaper than we would having to go out to contractors and all that. But thanks, you guys, very much.
Thank you.
The last piece that I did want to, in terms of the strategic planning, I did want to talk for a second. We are, right now, we're in critical piece, we've been working on this now for a couple weeks, I've been working with our administrators and Mark and Cam specifically within our athletic department. We are, we just put out a survey to our staff, to our parents and to our kids, we got a really good feedback with that, Tom, we had a great turnout in terms of survey response. And we'll go over that as part of the strategic planning process, but one piece of it is like timely for us, because at the same time that we're about to start our strategic planning and we're getting that data, we are reconfiguring the North Suburban Conference back to the, what's now being referred to as the NCS, the NSCA, which means we're going back to eight teams within our conference, not the two divisions of the North Suburban. The reason, it's important for us, because right now, in fact, this week, the ADEs have started meeting us on the scheduling of our North Suburban Conference, of those eight schools, looking at what everybody's offering. Warren has always been a leader in this conference, and the county as a whole, but in the conference, has been a leader in a number of capacities. We've offered a lot of sports, we've got success in a lot of sports. We, I think, represent the county very well and the conference very well in terms of our diversity, in terms of our location, in terms of our size. We should continue to try to want to be a leader in the conference, which is something that I think we have an obligation to do and a great opportunity. The reason it's important is because the conference reached out to us, as they have in past years, and said, hey, are you guys doing what you've done in the past? And we're like, well, we don't know, because everybody right now is looking at their offerings and trying to see what the North Suburban Eight can offer, right? And obviously, the more we can offer, the more they can offer, and we get stronger together. There's four sports that, just by the survey, in a preliminary fashion, that we've had some great interest in. Boys' and girls' water polo, boys' bowling, and girls' badminton are four sports that other conference teams offer, where large enough to where we definitely probably would have the student interest in the facilities, and budget-wise, we know that we can work through that and try to see how many levels we might be able to generate, if indeed, at the end of the strategic planning process, that's something we want to do. The reason I'm letting the board know is because I, I wanted, when Mark was going to the ADEs conference this week, I said, well, don't just assume we're doing everything that we've done, tell them you might do some other things, even assuming this next year, just in case we decide to do it. Otherwise, they were going to make conference schedules up based on the number of schools that we had in the past and just some assumptions that were there. So I wanted to let the board know, this is a critical time for the conference, they were, basically, what they were going to do is say, well, if Warren were to offer boys' and girls', I'll use water polo as an example, they would create a schedule with Warren in and create a schedule with us out. Same thing with badminton, same thing with boys' bowling. They're sports that we definitely invite the student survey showing interest in, except for, there's a little bit of cost in terms of getting a water polo net, and it's not even that dramatic, but they're relatively low-cost sports, in fact, they're relative to others, they're very low-cost sports, and we would, they're definitely, in at least some of the cases, they're sports that draw a different crowd, they draw a different interest from some different kids. So those four sports, I want to keep on the radar for the board, it'd be something that obviously we continue to process over the next couple of months, but I didn't want the conference to make the assumption that we weren't doing it, because it's an ideal time for us to review what we've offered and let them know that we'll get back to them in as soon as we can, with a commitment one way. get back to them as soon as we can with the commitment one way we are. Sound good?
Yes.
And I think that's the end of our report, Mr. Anderson.
Okay. Then we will move on to new business. So first item of new business is the ATM side.
We have before you a contract that our attorneys have reviewed for ATM machines with a company called ATM Genius. They, the company provides the machines, the, all the maintenance, filling of the machines, accounting for the machines. Our estimate is that we would put the vending machines in the cafeterias and possibly an outside location. That has yet to be determined.
You mean by outside location? I'm sorry.
Yes.
By outside location, you mean outside?
A building.
Correct. That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure.
So we still have, we would have to firm that up and talk more to the company about that, but definitely in the cafeterias would be places that we've had ATM machines before. Community Trust had given us free machines and then there was some change in law that required that machines be upgraded and they just couldn't afford to keep them at Warren any longer. But we do thank Community Trust for all the many years that they did have the machines at Warren. There would be a transaction fee of three dollars. Warren would receive seventy-five cents of that. We would provide the plug-in and the wireless access for the machines. So after talking administratively, we thought that that would be a nice option for the staff and students that choose to utilize it. And we obviously know that not everybody would use it, but it is a convenience to many. And with all the sporting events that we have here, that, you know, it would be accessible in the unit of open months also. So it has been attorney reviewed. We are asking that you consider approving this contract tonight.
Approving the contract?
Yes.
But it hasn't been finished negotiating.
Well, as it stands, we're going to go back and go, present it to the company.
I have a problem with approving a contract that we haven't finished negotiating.
Carol, I'm wondering if this Michelle Arkindle or whoever's representing the ATM Genius could come to the board meeting. And the reason why I ask that is on page two of three in the contract, item number eleven, it has a place where it references Warren and it references the owner. And then that section is blank. So I did my own research and I tried to Google Michelle Arkindle, ATM Genius. I went to the Secretary of State to see if there was a business that was registered either as a domestic or foreign business by that name. There wasn't. Also, because it's not a bank-owned ATM, they have all kinds of restrictions under the financial, Department of Financial and Regulations in Banking and whatever, under the statute, Electronic Fund Transfer Account. And under that statute, they have to register with the Department of Professional Regulations in Banking. And I did check there, they're not registered there. No Michelle Arkindle or ATM Genius. So what I read in the statute, they have like a trigger time before they actually get in the ATM banking business, that they have to register with the Commissioner of the Division of Banking. I didn't call them, but just on the site where I could search, I couldn't find them. So for me, I feel like we need to vet this a little bit better with whether the person is Michelle Arkindle or whoever runs ATM Genius. Because under the statute, we're, we are considered an affiliate under the definition. And then we have, I don't, we have to register then too as a affiliate, non-bank-owned ATM operator. So I think those type of things we need to look at before we just jump into this. Because it's not a bank-owned ATM.
Okay, got it.
There's like lots of statutory things that we have to overcome.
So there's some interesting questions. I don't know the answers, so I hope.
We'll be able to table it and bring it forward later.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I just think we should, I want to make sure we do whatever is appropriate.
And maybe they just need to file whatever with the.
Maybe they have, but it's just not there yet. There could be a lot of, a lot of reasons, but let's, let's take another meeting. We'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam, for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome.
Next item is the board passing, first reading. So you're going to read them or we're just going to read them or?
You read them, right?
Yeah, we're through, okay. I'm, I'm okay with it. Does anybody have any questions then? We've had a chance to read this as we've been posted for a while, so.
This is the first reading. We'll make sure those other board members that they have trouble finding have access.
Next item is the resolution and agreement with Lake, College of Lake County.
This may be kind of a stupid question, but I really didn't understand what, what is our purpose of doing this with the CLC? What is the, what are we trying to accomplish?
There's a couple of purposes, but ultimately, CLC is creating alliance with the high schools in Lake County. And the goal is to strengthen education across the board, right? So, so I'm really trying to make sure that, CLC looks at their own data, right? And they look at the readiness of students who are coming from Warren and the other high schools. And what we're trying to do is do a little research into, are our kids college-ready when they leave Warren and/or the other high schools and go to CLC and/or other places? And if not, what are the things that across the board we could be doing collectively to strengthen readiness for college? And/or the flip side of it is when kids are definitely ready, so if they're in their junior or senior year and now they're looking at exiting school either early or taking some classes for joint credit, is that a possibility to try to expand that, that range? So there's a number of goals within it. The partnership with CLC is just a natural one because we all do send numbers of kids to CLC and they've been struggling with some of the, the ret, you know, we don't want kids to be taking, we want to decrease the number of kids that have to take, you know, remedial classes if you will, to get up to the college-level entry classes. And I think that's everybody's collective goal, is to make sure that the students are college-ready and then have successful college experiences after that. And part of that we can only do if we create a situation where CLC has access to what our kids have done here and we have access to how our kids have done after they get to CLC. So that's the arrangement. The one good question that came in had to do with who on our end, and we can fill this in before Mr. Anderson would sign the agreement, but it was kind of blank on who on our end we were assigned to that initially. I think we would put in myself and Willie and Cindy Albright, who does most of our Power School work and our data extracts out of there, because that's probably the people, right now, those are the people that are kind of involved in that articulation. And Cindy obviously works from a, you know, from a tech person.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea, to have a technology person plus you and Willie.
Okay. Then we need a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution for college readiness and higher education student success. In addition, I move to approve the shared data agreement for educational study between Community College District Number 532, Lake County, Illinois, and Warren Township High School District 121, Lake County, Illinois.
With the additions of the three people from the.
With the addition of the staff that were mentioned, that will facilitate it, our Dr. Alvin, Willie Garrett and Cindy Albright.
Second. Roll call.
Motion by Monda, second by Anderson. Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mrs. Conwy.
Yes.
Mrs. Fianti.
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Monda.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. The next one is the bills. So I move to approve the payment of the bills for nine twenty-two fifteen in the amount of five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
John, I came up with five hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and fifty, seventy-one.
I came up with five twenty-four fifty-one seventy-one.
Five twenty-four fifty-one seventy-one. Because you can't, you can't take thirty-six for fifty-seven, it gets up into thirties. Just a guess. Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Fianti?
No.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Monda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have six yes, one no. Motion carries.
Then there's, I move to approve check number three-two-eight-one-nine-zero to Hodges and Louisey, Louisey, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Conwy. Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Monda?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
No.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Fianti?
No.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes, two no. Motion carries.
Next item is a hiring recommendation. So I move to approve Exhibit Eight, Hiring Recommendations, numbers eighty-six through ninety-four as posted, and ninety-five new positions, shared transportation bus ban aid, shared review, resignation, Beth Monson transferred, Patricia Meza, new hire, Beth Monson, new hire, Sarah Pasco, new hire.
Second.
I have a question on ninety-four, Bernie Floriani. Is he the insurance agent?
Ninety-four?
Yeah, number ninety-four.
On the short term.
On the first, on the one that's on the.
Oh, is he the state farm agent?
Yeah, that's what.
Is he Bernie? Bernie Floriani?
Floriani, thank you.
I don't know if that's him or not.
That's why I'm asking, I'm just curious. Who, so who put him forward?
Where'd he come from? I suppose.
I have no one here.
The backup documentation is.
No, I just, I, I don't remember. Sorry. How do I get that?
This is just curiosity.
It's just curiosity.
New feed in his resume.
Bernie has a local business, but has a strong background in basketball.
Yeah, it did say.
In his resume, which is the very last sheet, it says they're on line two, state farm agency since nineteen ninety-seven.
Thank you.
Bernie from Gurnee.
Bernie from Gurnee.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is, oh, we voted it.
Charlie lied, didn't I?
It's just hot in here. Do we approve the air conditioning in this place?
No.
Please. Roll call.
I have a motion by Mr. Anderson and a second by Mr. Monda. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
Mrs. Fianti?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Monda?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
We have seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Now onto item F, Approval of Regular Meeting Minutes and Executive Session Minutes of September eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of September eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second. I have one comment, if I could. I noticed, Jean and I noticed that on the top of the regular session minutes, the date still says.
August eighteenth.
August eighteenth and it says it's in the library. So we will make that change, okay, to the September eighth in the.
Yeah.
Can you read? So I just wanted to catch, since you can either do it as amended or it hasn't been approved yet, so we can make the change and you can just continue with the vote.
Okay. We need a motion.
Do we have a motion by Conwy, second by Drake?
Okay, then, let's go.
Then, Mr. Monda?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
I have to abstain, I was not at the meeting.
Mrs. Fianti?
No.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Abstain, I was not at the meeting either.
Okay. So we have four yes, one no, and two abstentions. Motion will carry.
Great. On the whole business, the adoption of the fiscal year sixteen budget. There was a big paragraph of a motion there.
I move to approve, I move to approve to adopt the fiscal year sixteen budget, whereas the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121, County of Lakes, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form a budget and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least thirty days prior to final action thereon. And whereas a public hearing was held as such to budget on the twenty-second day of September two thousand and fifteen, notice of said hearing is getting, getting at least thirty days prior thereto, as required by law and all other legal requirements have been complied with, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows, section one, colon, that the fiscal year of this school district be and the same hereby, hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand and sixteen. Section two, colon, that following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this district or said fiscal year.
Second.
That's a mouthful. Roll call.
Motion by Conwy, second by Monda. Mrs. Campbell?
I previously disclosed issues with the budget in the public hearing. My vote is no.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Fianti?
No.
Mr. Monda?
Yes.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes and two no. Motion carries.
Very good. I just want to remind board members that voted yes and no. If you could stand on and sign the budget document, we have three copies for you to sign.
Don't we have to sign the notes too, that we voted no, Carol?
I think so.
Everybody can.
Everybody, yeah.
Moving on to the Wetlands project.
We, quite a while ago, actually, September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, the board approved the Wetlands project and to engage in a contract agreement with the Wetlands group. That project would take portions of Gal Beach and actually make a national wetlands system along the tributaries of the Displanes River through Wisconsin and Annapolis. of the, this Plains River through Wisconsin and Illinois. So, the board has already approved that project. We wanted to give you an update on that. We had talked to the village about possibly them buying the property and maintaining it, and taking the pollution credits. There, upon reflection, they would like to join into an intergovernmental agreement and take the property that they own north of McClure and add that to the wetlands project, where we would jointly maintain the property and jointly receive, if, if there was any pollution, pollution abatement credits attributable to their property, they would take that, and we would take, take ours. It leaves the control of the property in our hands. We would also be looking to the Park District for expertise on maintaining the property. So, right now, we're asking the attorneys to review the wetlands agreement, so we can have the contract executed, that the board approved. And we will hopefully be bringing forth an intergovernmental agreement with the village, which is being worked on, for maintenance of the property. And possibly down the road, we will have an intergovernmental agreement that will be brought to the board, that would enjoin the Park District, who already does maintain wetland property, so we could share services and use their expertise. So, that's the update, and we would hope to bring those agreements back to you, hopefully by November.
Is that move still gonna work on?
Yes.
Is that move still working on?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
I think the board, you're clearly at our last meeting on the property itself, and trying to make sure, you know, that we don't have those properties for sale, and then kill for her work, and trying to continue to work with the wetlands project, and yet move it from a sale to this, to the village, let them be part of it. Good.
Carol, the property that's maintained by the Park District, is that the property that was the old Gurnee grade school?
They have several sites that are wetlands, that would be one of them.
Oh, okay. Where, where else did they have them?
Um, I'm just curious, because I don't, obviously, I'm not aware.
I talked to their executive director, who didn't give me the locations of the property, but she said they had several properties that had wetlands that they, they maintained. She didn't name them though.
Oh, okay. I was just curious what besides the new one?
I don't think I have information on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. But it's very neat to hear the community want to work together like that. It's really another example of great things happening.
The, the village and the Park District are both very excited, because they feel that this will be a nationally recognized project. And for Warren, to have the opportunity to be part of it, I think is, is very exciting.
Opens opportunities for students as well, which is very nice. Okay. We'll look forward to hearing more on that in the future. Last item on the Old Business is the dismissal of Margaret Marar. So, I move to approve the resolution as amended to terminate Margaret Marar's employment with Warren Township High School, District 121.
Second.
Roll call.
John, I just would like to state again what I stated earlier, is that I had an issue as an employer. Moving an employee from, basically, you know, two evaluations that didn't document issues to dismissal, without any corrective action in the middle, to just go from two evaluations that do not have a corrective action plan to dismissal. I, I feel that there's liability there, and I don't think that an employer is fair. I overshared that, I just wanted to say again.
Gee, thanks. And by the way, not entirely true, but I'm not gonna argue with you. Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Monda. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bianchi?
No.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
Mr. Monda?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. That's the last item on the agenda, so I move to adjourn the meeting. Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Walsh. Mrs. Bianchi?
Yes.
Mrs. Conwy?
Yes.
Mr. Monda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.